I gotta admit, I'm a little distracted heading into recording this show because I could see the end of the legislative session from here and I am so ready for it. I am, I am tired and exhausted and uh, and the thing is like, I shouldn't even be complaining. I'm not down in the hothouse. I'm just, you know, watching all this stuff unfold, but it has been.
Which, which conference committee are we missing right now, Rob, that you had detracted?
I am, I am, I am actually, well, it's not a conference committee. I'm pretty sure the property tax plan is back in uh, Senate Finance Attacks, but it's sounding like, I think they've got a deal and.
In the full committee?
I don't, I don't understand it entirely and I wish I could be watching it right now, but my understanding here.
Oh, sorry.
My understa-, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to do my show. My understanding is that the um, they have a deal and the deal is gonna be pretty much right where we started with a $1,550 credit, a 3% cap and no skin in the game, which is precisely, I mean, there's some other technical corrections. They did some stuff, you know, they were really concerned about capping schools, which, which, you know, may be important to our guest. Um, you know, there were, there were some, some questions about and, and there's some debate over, you know, stopgap funding in the interim to make sure that, that, you know, we're not hurting our schools, but um, you know, for the most part, we're gonna get what the, what the governor wanted. Anyway, my guest host today, who we've already heard, Aaron O'Ban sitting in for Chad, who is really on vacation.
Who's actually on vacayfim and quite a long one, frankly.
I'm, I am so jealous that he's gonna, he's gonna watch baseball, he's gonna go to Pearl Jam.
We went to Pearl Jam last night. I was getting a couple, a couple of videos sent to me. I think it was.
I don't, I don't, I don't even like Pearl Jam that much. I don't really like what Eddie Vedder did to like a whole generation of lead singers where they were all doing the Eddie Vedder voice and it was just
Sure.
A long time, maybe.
Is that, okay.
Maybe I'm, maybe that's an old guy thing, but that, that really bothered me. Uh, our guest is Katie Christensen. She is the president of the Fargo School Board and we're gonna talk with her a little bit. First of all, I mean, Katie, I, we didn't have you on about this, but what do you make of the property tax as a, as a local governing, you know, head of a local governing entity? You know, how are you feeling about how this property tax debate unfurled?
And, and can I add to that question based on now the two and a half percent increase per year of the next biennium for K-12 schools?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm deeply concerned. I'm really, really worried. There's really no other way um, to put it and I, I think you both know Robin Melson um, is the chair of our governmental affairs committee. So she sends out um, updates and it just feels like every half hour, every hour, something is changing. It's like trying to keep up with where we end up landing, but it, it does look like we're going to end or land on um, a 2.5% increase for K-12 education both years, which is really quite detrimental to us. I mean, that's not keeping up with inflation. It's, that's gonna be really, really rough for our budgets, but then we're also looking at um, the 3% caps on property tax. Um, our mill levies only last, our mill levy approval only lasting for four years and that those votes need to happen during the primary or general election. And those things can quite frankly be really catastrophic for our um, K-12 funding.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough situation because on the other hand, the public has had it with property taxes. And if we didn't, I mean, they had to do something and maybe this isn't it, but I'm, I am really afraid if they didn't do some shocking off this session, we were gonna get a ballot measure and it was gonna be worse, but uh, anyway, we didn't have you on to talk about that. As far as the Fargo Public School District, you guys have been getting some heat. You um, discontinued some educational justice philosophies and, and I wanna be really clear. What is that? Was it just like some mission statement stuff on your website? I mean, I, I don't, calling something a philosophy, is it a policy? Wha- what specifically has changed?
Uh, yeah, Rob, that's actually a really great question um, because it is putting us, it's a, it's a little bit of a conundrum. Um, and I think even within the board and the district where we ask ourselves, so what is the philosophy? Um, so in July of 2023, it's my understanding that um, our current superintendent, Dr. Gandhi, um, who as you know, is, he has resigned and so we are going to have a new superintendent stepping in soon. Um, he basically, I think, wanted to put out some public statements in support of certain areas that were very concerning to him, um, to our students and to some of our staff. And basically what he did is he pulled some philosophies from the NEA, from the National Education Association, adopted them, got some feedback from other people in the community, some other groups. Um, and then as a board, we, we affirmed the statements in 2023 and we reaffirmed them in 2024. But the problem was it does, it did create a little bit of a conundrum. I mean, there are these value statements that I, I believe in, I inherently believe in them deeply, but they don't, we don't really know where they fit in terms of our district. Like we have a mission statement, we have our values and our vision and we have a strategic plan and we have policies. They're not really embedded in those. And so I think a lot of board members and a lot of people in our community and our district strongly believe in these statements, but just what you were saying is that even after we affirmed them, we weren't really sure like where do they fit in the decision-making process? And where do they fit in terms of budgeting? So truthfully, it didn't actually change anything. So the philosophies were pulled from the website. Um, but we actually, we still have administrative policies that protect our students and staff, anyone in our buildings, from discrimination. Um, and it's actually discrimination based on race, religion, gender, sexual orientation. There's a long list there. Um, we still actually follow, carry out our educational justice um, values. We still have an educational justice program that really works to implement district-wide equitable processes. We still use restorative practices. So it didn't change anything within our buildings, any of our operations. It didn't change anything procedurally.
So what, what did it do?
That's a good question. I mean, honestly, to some extent, I think it brought maybe comfort. Um, I think it provided this external, like I, I, I do believe in value statements. I, I mean, I wanna make that very clear, but I think for um.
But you said these weren't value statements, right? You, you have mission, you have.
Sorry, yeah, well, they're not, they're not, I guess they're an expression of values, but they're not the district's value statements. They are the district's philosophies.
Philosophy.
So, but that's the question. I mean, what, what did they do? And I think to some extent, it was an external message about some of our stances on some particular, particular legislation and some things that were going on, maybe locally and nationally to try to bring some, maybe some relief or bring some comfort to people that, that this is what we believe in, this is what we want.
And to be fair, Katie, the, I mean, overwhelmingly what was included in the philosophy, maybe it would help. Have we read what the philosophy was? I don't even know how long it is, was. Um, but I, I mean, the, the focus was on primarily like marginalized communities. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, I actually um, have pulled them up and now of course I can't find them. But there were four specific categories. There was honesty in education, um, there was disability justice. Um, I think there was um, affirming LGBTQIA+ students and then there was restorative practices. So yeah, I mean, it was very much heavily, it was heavily focused on um, vulnerable populations, marginalized populations. And I think a lot of this, there was concern about just truth in education, that we rely on our teachers and our librarians to determine, they're the experts in their field. So they're the ones that select our materials, but we also have a, an administrative policy that already sensed that. So it was really more of like an external facing document explaining, giving a little clarity to what's already embedded in our policies.
I, I don't like what motivated the Trump administrat-, you know, cause this is kind of a reaction, right? I mean, the Trump administration is very sensitive and they're singling out schools, organizations. I mean, any, anybody that has sort of, I, I guess, I guess rhetoric for, for messaging, I guess, for lack of a better term, that they don't like or that, that triggers them because of certain whatever woke or whatever their stuff is. I don't like that. I think it's mean spirited and stupid, but part of me kinda wonders if, if developing these sorts of things is a good use of, of taxpayers or the time of a governing board like this in the first place? Because it seems duplicative, like if I, you know, especially like, like if somebody gets elected to the school board and they don't like those values, they're not gonna govern in accordance with them because ultimately the job of the board is to develop policy, whether it's spending policy or, or, or policy, policy. And I mean, that, that's the true expression of the values. What's the point of having this other thing that's sitting over here that doesn't? I mean, I think there's people in the, obviously there's people in the public are very passionate about it and they care about it, but I'm looking at it thinking, what's the point of this?
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, that kinda even came up in conversation at the time. Um, that, yeah, that was what was the point, cause there aren't actually any, we don't have any teeth in this. So like our administrative policies that govern our district, that's where the teeth, that's where we have, they, they carry the weight of the district. And so, I mean, to some extent, I kind of agree with you, like I, I believed in these statements for sure. And I think that it, I think some people liked seeing them there. Um, but the actual like inner workings of our district, that is rooted in our strategic plan and that is rooted in our policies. And frankly, it's rooted in our budget. Like where do we put our money? Where do we put our efforts? Um, that's the real true work of our district.
So my question continues to be through all of this and I, I serve on a nonprofit board who's had this exact same conversation. Like how much do you put out there for the world to see? And, and for many good reasons. I mean, I, I know I have, I have never lived the life of maybe what is considered to be a vulnerable or marginalized community. I know that. So I, I've got a lot of privilege in that part of the conversation. And does, does like um, maybe muting that a bit change the way we operate? And so what I, what I'm hearing is it might be pulled from the website, but you're not scrubbing your administrative policies. You're not changing the way you operate. And that's where I also see the other side of the corner, coin of, well, I guess if the Trump administration is really serious about this, aren't they going to, wouldn't they actually dig a little deeper? Like, oh, we're gonna check your website and if it's not on your website, you're good. Um, that's where I'm, I'm, you're in a no win situation in my opinion, but.
We are 100, I agree with you completely. We are 100% in a no win um, situation with this, yeah.
And what was the, essentially the threat of why you ended up removing the, the?
Yeah, so we did this when, we, we did this when we did because the United States Department of Education was requiring all public school districts to certify compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act and the responsibilities outlined in Students for Fair Mission versus Harvard. Um, we work and we, when you read the document and when you sign the document, you're basically saying that your federal funding, that if you want federal funding, you have to agree to these standards. Now, we as a board feel, well, I shouldn't say we feel, we know that we are in compliance. What does our president think is compliant? That's a totally different story. So we did this when we did because we were in the process of applying, of applying for and renewing a lot of our federal grants, which is $19.7 million. And we wanted to protect those dollars. We did not wanna put ourselves at risk. Um, I don't, I don't want our district to face a funding freeze. I don't want it to lose funds. And frankly, if we can, I'd really like to even avoid an investigation. So that's why we polled them because um, it was the state agencies that were tasked with collecting these certifications. So our board approved it on April 8th. I signed it that night and they were due April 9th. So we sent it in the very next day and I think more than anything, it's because I don't, I'm not playing games with our federal funding.
I, I, I mean, I think that, that makes the most sense, right? I mean, we have a, we have an administration right now that's on a seek and destroy mission. I mean, they're, they're looking, they're looking for stuff. And so if you have something like this, just hanging out on the website, it's a target on your back. I mean, that's what it is at the end of the day. So enough, nothing's changing internally. I mean, I, and again, I mean, I'm looking at a picture on, on Robin Hubner's article, you know, of people, you know, showing up to the school board and they were very upset and they were holding signs and I, I mean, I, I understand that. Um, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's the policy that matters. I mean, the, the, the rest of it is, is, you know, sort of irrelevant. Had you heard anything from the Trump administration specifically about Fargo or, or anything that, that we may be on the radar? Or is it just sort of, you, you see which way the wind's blowing, let's get out in front of this?
Um, we had not heard anything specifically from them because they had tasked the state agencies with collecting these certifications. So we had not heard from them. Um, but obviously our attorney was following very closely what was happening with the executive orders um, and, and how Trump was interpreting certain court cases. And so that's why this came to us. And we were in the process of applying for these federal grants and we had to sign that form. And so that's, that's how we came to this conclusion.
But I mean, I, I personally know a good number of you who serve on the Fargo Public School Board and I, I, I've seen like your history of the way you view the world, the way you treat people, the way you believe in um, all kids and, and all of your staff. Um, it, it's, it, it seems to me a bit of a like, don't tell me who you are, show me who you are. Kind of, you know, it's like, um, and so I, I certainly trust that, that all of you, much like I believe in probably damn near every school board member across the state, really believes in doing what's best for kids always. Um, and having to protect the funding that allows you to do that work or that allows the staff to do that work. Um, so I mean, do you feel like this is just gonna be the start of it? Is it?
Um, well, first of all, I wanna say that um, like what you said, like that has been the hardest part. I mean, like when people showed up with signs, I mean, that hurt, that stung because like I, I do believe in these statements. Um, and I, you know, I mean, when people say protect our kids, I'm like, but, but we are, like, we're not taking any protections out. So um, you know, that, that definitely stung. Um, and I've gotten a lot of questions about, well, what next? Like, so you're taking these down, so what happens if they go after our policies? Or what happens if, if this digs in deeper? And I think that's a very valid question, you know, and I think we'd have to take that case by case, kinda depending on what does it impact and what would it do? I, I think personally, um, as a board member, I would stand firm if it started to impact our students' experiences. Like if it was something that impacted access to the materials and the curriculum, if it was something that did impact their protections, um, those are probably places where I would be more willing to actually use our district resources to protect their education.
You know, the, I don't know what, what we're debating about. It reminds me of the debates we have every two year or when we have, you know, the state political conventions and there are endless fights over the party platforms and people just get super hung up. They want this in there, they don't want that in there. And then they pass this platform and nobody cares about it for another two years. Um, because it, it, it has no teeth. It, I mean, there are, you know, all, all the, all the Republican or Democratic elected officials in all the various offices, they don't care that much about it. You know, there, it's not dictating how they govern in office. So there's a part of me, and, and this is one thing I struggle. I, I, I think I've made it clear to the public how I feel about Donald Trump. If, if, if you feel like I've been ambiguous, I'm sorry, I've been laying it on pretty thick. But there is some utility, I think, in like, let's get back to basics. Cause I watch a lot of government and I see a lot of this stuff and I just don't see the point in it. The policy is what matters ultimately. You know, actions are what matters ultimately. So if we, if we cut through some of this stuff, I don't know that that's a bad thing. And, and even some of the, you know, we're gonna have a debate about the, the funding question in Minot State and that really hurts. You know, Minot State, I mean, that's in my community and I've seen the work that this program does. It's really helped people. Um, on the other hand, we have $36 trillion in national debt and we're not getting rid of that without firing some people or not addressing that problem. So I, I guess, I, I don't know, I don't know what my question is even is for you, but I mean, there is, there is a feeling that there's some clarifying stuff, like we have to get serious about some of this stuff. And it feels like, I, I don't know, maybe, I mean, do you feel like this was extra now, having gone through this and, 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 I mean, do you kind of understand that perspective?
Um, I may, I don't think I'm understanding your question.
I was, and that's completely my fault. Um, I mean, do you?
So I, I, I mean, I, I just have a question about there. I, I think there was a letter to the, to the editor in the forum, following the action of the school board, basically saying that Fargo Public School is jumping on on this, that, that the courts are actually preventing um, the, the executive orders from impacting these kinds of thing. I mean, I think there is supposed to be like a firewall between the federal government and local school board operations. Um, with the, you know, with the exception of making sure that, that there are protections in place for everybody. So do, I mean, what do you say in response to that, I guess?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question too, because I think it was actually the day after we turned in our form or a couple of days after that, that there was a court that blocked um, the Trump's attack basically on DEI in the schools. So I, I think my answer to that is, um, again, I don't want to play games with our funding and I think that our federal administration right now is so unpredictable. I mean, I've had people reach out and say, why didn't you just adapt the philosophies? So, so then two, three days later, what happens when something else comes out and suddenly we have to change words again? I mean, like, I don't wanna live in this world where it's this constant cycle of what words are okay and our philosophies and what words are not. Um, and so I, I don't actually feel like we jumped the gun. I mean, I've had a lot of people reach out and they'll say like, put this back in the schools. Well, there's, do you mean put the words back on the website? Because nothing changed in the schools. Um, I've had people reach out and say, why can't you be like Harvard? We need more Harvards. We don't have the donors and the endowments and the money like Harvard does.
Harvard has a multi-billion dollar endowment and, and generations of, of excellent lawyers that they've graduated, alumni who could come in and help them out. Uh, Fargo is many wonderful people who have graduated from Fargo Public School. Um, we're not matching Harvard.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, go Harvard, like way to go, like pave the way for us. I mean, I would love it, but I'm not playing games with this funding. These federal funds, this is a lot of title funding that really applies to some of our most vulnerable youth. And I'm, I'm not open to that and obviously you two follow the legislative session. I mean, how many times did you hear those lawmakers refer to Fargo and decisions?
Too many.
Yeah, too many, too many. So I, I'm done. I don't want us to be a target. Um, leaving the policies up opens the door to actually losing funding that would seriously harm our kids and what happens in our school. But I think taking them down, it doesn't change anything operationally. It doesn't change anything procedurally. And I, I just, I want the, I want the drama to be somewhere else and not on our district.
I, I found myself in an awkward, you know, last session, they passed the, the bathroom pronoun bill and then your superintendent at the time, Rupak Gandhi, you know, was, was very outspoken in saying he's not gonna follow the law. And I was critical of that because democracy starts to break down if public officials start picking and choosing which laws they're gonna follow. We may not like the laws. I didn't like laws, it was mean spirited. I mean, and I wrote that, but I had Representative Bill Twight stand up and read my column on the floor and I'm like, boy, you're, you are really selecting which parts of that column that you're reading. Cause I didn't like what Mr. Gandhi did. I, and I, and I frankly, I thought, I thought it did a disservice to your district. I thought it put a target on your backs to the point where we just got another bathroom bill that just got signed into law that I think was motivated entirely by, by uh, his, his actions. And I think if, and, and the thing is, is this sounds terrible because we're Americans and I don't want people to shrink back when they feel like something's worth criticizing. But there's this like, there's a moment, like pick, pick your moments. And there's also a right way to do this, cause if everything's turned to 11 and we're all, we're always gonna say, we're not gonna follow the law if we don't like the law, then that just creates a snowball effect where we get frankly, I think to where we are now with this federal administration. So I, I don't know, I, I feel like we kinda paid a price for the decision that, that uh, your superintendent made.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you and a part of me is proud of him and I spoke in support of that. And then a part of me is like, oh crud, what did we just do here? Because yeah, I mean, we became this target then. Um, and I, I do think some of the bills brought forward, a lot of them were in, in reaction to that. And so it's like, we're in this constant kind of reactionary mode back and forth and that's not a great place to be um, with our funding, with our kids, with our schools.
But it's such a distraction, uh, where I, I get so tired. One of the things I don't like the culture wars is because I think it's so much grandstanding over things that don't matter.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't think that this philosophy stuff ultimately matters all that much, right? I'm, I'm very satisfied that the good people in the Fargo School District are taking care of the kids there. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied. I'd get worried if we started making big policy changes. You know, now I'm gonna start to worry, but we, we get wrapped around the axle about things that don't matter and we have these lengthy turmoil debates. I think sometimes we just need to think, does this really matter? Is this the hot hill we wanna die on? Cause sometimes it's not.
Yeah.
You know, go ahead, Katie.
I would say, you know, the, the whole bathroom bill, I mean, I'm sure you two watched some of those committee hearings. Like they're talking about mirrors, they're talking about sinks, they're talking about wiping off toilet seats and it's, I'm just wanting to pull my hair out, like this, you were elected to be a state lawmaker to talk about bathroom sinks and mirrors.
I don't like that they banned the good bathrooms. Like I, I was really excited, like let's move in, there's a side, like I, and I'm, I'm big on like, let's find common ground where we can all agree on. So if you don't like trans people, fine, I don't agree with you and I think that's mean spirited. But can we get to a place where we each have our, our nights own little private stall in a public bathroom? Where I'm not sitting in some sheet metal enclosure where anybody could walk by and look through the gaps? Now it's a spectator sport what I'm doing in there? Like that was great. I was looking forward to the day I don't have to pee next to another guy at a urinal. I really like that, but now we can't do that because some people in the legislature are scared of trans people. I, I don't understand it, like that seemed like such a, like an easy solution. Let's just build the new bathrooms this way and everybody can be happy. But no, we can't be happy because we gotta make it clear to trans people that they're not welcome in our state. It's just stupid. It, it, it boggles the mind. I mean, I just watch this stuff, like why are we debating this? This doesn't matter.
A couple of years ago, I went to a concert at Red Rocks and, you know, outside of Denver and stood in line with literally as many types of people as you can possibly think of. Like the, the man standing behind me felt like he was seven feet tall, in part because I'm very, very short. But we entered the bathroom at the same time where the stalls were completely floor to ceiling. There was a door with a lock on it, no cracks in between, you know? And there was like a kid who went in, in front of me. Um, and everybody went into their stall, came out of their stall, washed their hands, so help me, I hope they did, and then went about their business, back to the concert. And it was almost like it was no big deal. Um, but uh, now see you, I got a little distracted with the bathroom conversation, but you did just write a column on that. Oh, here it is.
In my defense, in my defense, Katie sent us down that particular rabbit hole.
Yeah, whoops, sorry, that was my fault.
Well, I do wanna ask Katie, as a locally elected school board member, who I, I assume did not run for the school board so that you could have to engage or follow along or figure out how to implement, um, when people get elected at levels above you, um, above you in terms of, you know, the higher um, levels of government, um, how, how much harder that makes the job you actually ran for? And does that impact the ability for really good people to actually wanna do the job of being a locally elected official?
Yeah, yeah, 100%. Actually, one of the reasons that I ran is because um, I didn't want book bans in our schools. And I had heard of other school boards around the, the country that would come in and like, they would ban books or they would try to limit how teachers could teach. And I am a former teacher and so, and I was like, I don't want anybody like that sitting on my school board. So I ran and now I'm like, wait a minute, like now.
This sucks.
Lawmakers are saying this and it's the federal lawmakers that are, so I feel like, I feel like I ran because I almost wanted to protect the district from that outside noise and let our teachers do their jobs, like they're the experts. But now it's like, oh, wait a minute, what do we do when the state tells us?
I don't, I don't like this um, this connotation of civic involvement, cause it's like they show up for the crap that doesn't matter. You know, when they should be there, when we're having like a really difficult budget question, right? Because that stuff's hard. The capacity to tax the public is finite. There's only so many dollars to go around. We have to make hard decisions about priorities sometimes. These are really important debate. Those debates, which are boring and tedious at times, the rooms are empty. But something like this, and people come out of the woodwork, but I ask you, which of these is more important? Right, the, the, the debate about the philosophies that ultimately don't really have any bearing on Fargo's policies at all? Or the debate about the budget, which very, very few people show up for? That is frustrating to me and, and yet you'll see people on social media talking about how politically engaged they are. And it's like, yeah, but I see what you're engaging on and it's the fluff that does not matter. That is a frustrating thing to behold and frankly, I, and also I, I'm sure the elected official on this call doesn't wanna hear me say this, but we don't blame the voters enough for this crap. Um, it, it's, it's like, this is what you're voting for, this is what you're prioritizing, this is why we're doing this. This isn't a top-down issue. You voted for this and now you're getting it, anyway.
Well, I just wanna, I, I'm, I'm mostly sorry frankly, that, that you all were put in this position because I, I do think it is a no-win situation. You will be probably chasing your tails for the next three and a half years. I think it's wholly unfair because you don't know what the next little bit of drama is going to be. Um, I appreciate that you are willing to do it, but I, I'm mostly sorry that you were put in the position you had to.
I appreciate that, I really do.
I think it was the right decision. I mean, why, why die on this hill? This, you know, again, the kids and then, you know, one tier down, you know, all the educators and everything that work in the, in the school system, that's what's most important, that's who we got. That's who we gotta protect.
Yeah, I'm not playing, I'm not playing games with our federal funding, I'm not playing games with our funding, that's kinda what it came down to me.
And they are.
Yeah, and they are, and I'm just.
The administration is, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that.
Inversions of this debate are gonna be playing out in local governing entities and programs across our local governments, across our state government. And, and the impact, the chilling effect that's gonna have on people trying to do innovative things, people trying to get things done. Um, I, I don't even know how to go about calculating it, anyway, Katie, thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for having me, thank you so much.
Thanks, Katie.